All right, good evening and welcome, everyone. I call the City Council Committee of the Whole Meeting for Wednesday, May 1st to order. This time we'll have a moment of silence, a lot of things going on, so whatever you want to think about and potentially pray for. If you'd all please stand and join Alderman Tim Dunn in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, sir. Mr. Grup, please call the roll for tonight.
Ar Dunn?
Here.
Kelly? McGinnis?
Here.
Reinert?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Newton?
President.
Lynch?
Here.
T Dunn?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
And Burkholder?
Here.
Nine present, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening and welcome. As we begin the meeting of the City Council Committee of the Whole, I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's watching through any particular electronic device. Respectfully, we welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you share your thoughts, you're sharing them with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but as to your participation, please reflect the common desire we all share: to make Davenport a better place. For the folks in here, just as a reminder, if you'd be kind enough to put these on silent or turn them off simply that they don't get in the way of anybody talking. If you want to address the council on an agenda item tonight, wait for the chair to recognize you, but please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. We'd love to know your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. And you'll have five minutes. Please address the council and staff as one body and not any individual. We'll be respectful of you, and please be respectful of us. Thank you. Ms. Merritt, is there a city administrator update tonight?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Very good. Okay, we have four public hearings, one under community development and three under public works. We'll start with community development. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I open the public hearing for case ORD 24-02, being the request of the City of Davenport to amend Chapter 17.08 entitled "Uses of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by Updating the Billboard Definition and Principal Use Standards." Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this public hearing? Please step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward.
Derek Cornet, Seventh Ward. If you're going to update it, I think that something you should take into consideration is do not allow companies to advertise illegal things in our state. If it's illegal in our state, don't let them advertise it here. Might be legal in Illinois, but it's not legal here, so don't let them advertise it. And if we do let them advertise it, it's just giving the people permission to go to Illinois and bring it back.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? State your name and address or ward, please.
Gary Eklund, and I live in Alderman Kelly's Ward. I'm not sure. I've mentioned before that I know from previous experience that not all of the alderpeople read all of the so-called green sheets, even if they're on the computer these days. I don't know if they still actually give you green sheets. And this one doesn't really explain what the change would be. Freedom of speech is important, and it mentions billboards and not signs, but as the mayor would remember from a letter I wrote to him, the Public Works Department not very long ago declared it illegal for me to have one single sign in my yard, in my backyard, in a tight turnaround. And I don't know whether this is going to make billboards illegal or certain signs or no flashing lights. If it's no flashing lights in your eyes, then I'm in favor of it. Other than that, I'm probably opposed. But I want to emphasize, I had exactly one single sign in my yard. The city declared it illegal for me to have that sign in my backyard. And then, when they came, eventually, on their two of their physical attacks, they went through my yard removing signs that said "Raspberry Patch" and "Blueberry Patch" and "Blackberry Patch," and these little garden signs like this that you buy at the store, the supervisor of code enforcement at parking lots.
Sir, do you have any comments about billboards?
Well, I don't know if the billboard's freedom of speech idea applies to everything, but I'm suggesting that the city should not be allowed to arbitrarily declare that signs are legal in everybody else's yards, but not in your yard and not in my yard, and send people to...
If you specifically have comments about the billboard...
Right. I will sit down.
Okay.
If you are outlawing signs that flashlights in drivers' eyes, please outlaw signs that flashlights in other people's eyes. Those can be very irritating. There's not a lot of really bad offenders right now in Davenport, but I think that's an issue for driver safety, flashing lights. Flashing lights or police cars are great on signs, not necessarily. But there's a freedom of speech issue here, and I'm in favor of freedom of speech, and that includes for you and for me, not just for you.
Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? State your name and address or ward, please.
Diane Salmon, Eighth Ward. I also agree that CBD pot signs need to be removed. We're sending a very bad message to our young people that it is okay to go to one state and come to another state when we know it's illegal. They are very impressionable at these ages. They're very impulsive at these ages, and it just does not give Davenport a good look to have signs for something that's illegal. We would never put up signs for underage drinking. We would never put up signs for human trafficking, something that would be encouraged. These kids don't know the difference between right and wrong if they haven't been raised in a good home and with good morals. So we're sending a bad message to these kids. Go to Illinois, bring it back, you're okay. It's not fair for our police department to be overwhelmed with those kinds of petty things when we have so many other things going on. So please be careful what we're portraying Davenport to be, because right now, we're struggling. We got 339 days since the building collapsed. Our city's always in the news for something bad.
Can we talk, ma'am? Can we talk about billboards?
I'm getting there.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So anyway, we need to be in the news for something good, and it's not good when we're putting up signs for something that is illegal. We want to have a good city again, so we need appropriate billboards for our city. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who's here to comment on this item? Seeing no one, I move to close the public.
(Crosstalk).
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This public hearing has been closed.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Next, public hearings are under public works. Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, please.
I open the first public hearing on a plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Emerald Drive reconstruction project. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the second public hearing on a plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the East Locust Street, Grand Avenue to Eastern Avenue resurfacing project. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address this public hearing? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Aye.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed. I open the third public hearing on the plan specification, form of contract, and estimated cost for the water pollution control plant and compost facility, flood mitigation, stormwater, and a fluid pumping system project. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address this public hearing?
Gary Eklund, I live in Davenport. I live in Alderman Kelly's Ward. I will be very brief if you let me speak. It mentions water pollution control, flood mitigation, stormwater. Part of stormwater and water pollution control involves illegal dumping of items such as brand-new cans of unopened paint. I'm asking that your Public Works Department and a police officer in the room be arrested for illegal dumping of paint into the water supply.
No, no. Yeah.
Anyone else?
People should be arrested for crimes.
Please, sit down, Gary. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I move to close the public hearing.
Aye.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. This public hearing is closed, and that concludes public hearings for this evening. Your Honor, back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Dunn and Alderman Kelly. Next area is proclamations. We have two: Mental Health Awareness Month and Bicycle Safety Awareness Month. The first one is Mental Health Awareness Month, and that will be read by Alderwoman Burkholder. Alderwoman Burkholder, please.
Thank you. City of Davenport, Iowa proclamation: Whereas the month of May is Mental Health Awareness Month, a national event that aims to bring attention to the importance of mental health; and whereas mental health includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being affected how we think, feel, act, and is always present, whether positive or negative; and whereas the four major types of mental health disorders are mood, anxiety, personality, and psychotic, of which anxiety disorders are most common in America, affecting approximately 40 million adults 18 and older; whereas even children struggle with their mental health; and whereas most mental health disorders cannot be cured, but can usually be treated effectively to minimize symptoms and allow an individual to function in work, school, or social environments; and whereas it is important to understand that someone can have poor mental health without a mental illness diagnosis; and whereas reaching out and talking to a trusted person or professional can improve a mental state in most cases and minimize illnesses from ever developing; and whereas through public education and community awareness, we all can help to improve the lives of those affected by mental illness and mental health crisis. And now therefore, we, Mike Mattson and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Davenport and encourage all within our community to make a difference by helping to end the silence and stigma surrounding mental illness. The Davenport Sky Bridge will display the color green Monday, May 27, 2024, through Sunday, June 2, 2024, in recognition of Mental Health Awareness Month dated this first day of May I move the proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I do have Heather Hallman, President of For the Love of Mental Health, to accept this.
So, my name is Heather Hallman. I am... Sorry. I'll get this to you. Okay. Sure. Okay. Turn. There we go. One, two, three. Thank you. My name is Heather Hallman. I am 41 years old. I started For Love Mental Health in 2020, the thick of COVID. And I just wrote a little speech here, so forgive me, I'm just going to read it. We are For Love of Mental Health, and our purpose is to create a safe space where individuals can support one another through peer-to-peer counseling and resources within our community. We are overwhelmed with a gratitude to accept this proclamation, and we will be honored to uphold our purpose, and we will strive to get loud for mental health and to end the stigmas that come with it. For Love of Mental Health is a community organization that aims to improve mental health as a whole through positive activities, shared resources, and listening ears. For Love of Mental Health does offer free weekend activities as well as community get-togethers. We host game nights, we have social hours, and we do lots of community givebacks through free clothing drives, park cleanups, and restorations, and we also help individuals wherever we can. We operate a peer-to-peer support group on Facebook called For the Love of Mental Health, and we are a safe community of over 2,100 members from over 10 different countries, including Canada, United Kingdom, Australia, and South Africa, because mental health is a worldwide concern. When sharing our organization with the members in our community, we are shocked by just how many people misunderstand the difference between mental health and mental illness. To not shadow mental illness, we want to emphasize that all humans do, in fact, have mental health. Your surroundings, your life circumstances, experiences can majorly affect it, seen or unseen by the naked eye. So we would like to thank the City of Davenport, as well as Jessica Knowles, for submitting For Love Mental Health for this honor, and we also want to thank our amazing community, our admins, and our team for their time and continued support in the growth of For Love Mental Health. We cannot express our appreciation enough, and the community, because the community adds value and continues to spread awareness and hope. So stay positive, stay here, and know that you are not alone.
Thank you. The next is Bicycle Safety Awareness Month. That will be read by Alderman Tim Dunn. Alderman Tim Dunn, please.
The City of Davenport, Iowa proclamation: Whereas bicycle is a healthy, convenient, and financially and environmentally sound form of transportation; and whereas Americans are increasingly using bicycling by the means to commute and exercise or for fun; and whereas in many states, a bicycle is considered a vehicle when it is operated on a road, and bicyclists must follow the same rules as motorists; and whereas collisions with motorists is one of the most common causes of bicycle accidents, often resulting in severe injuries and even death; and whereas of the 1,230 bicyclist fatalities in the United States in 2021, 853 of those were motor vehicle related; and whereas, according to the National Highway Traffic Safety Association, bicycle-related fatalities are the highest during the summer months between June and September; and whereas bicyclists can do their part and help reduce injury and death on the road by wearing properly fitted helmet, being visible by wearing bright colors, reflective materials, riding in the same direction as traffic, albeit in traffic signs, signals, and lane markings, being predictable by riding in a straight line and using hand signals when changing lanes or turning, and by focused alert; and whereas motorists can do their part to help reduce injury and death on the road passing bicyclists with care and allowing three feet of distance, looking for bicyclists before opening car doors, pulling out of the parking spaces, and before making turns yielding to bicyclists at intersections, and never driving distracted or impaired. And there now for, we, Mike Mattson and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim May 24th as Bicycle Awareness Month in Davenport, and urge all residents to join this observance, not only this month, but all year round, to bring attention to the importance of sharing the road, dated this day, first day of May 2024. Can I make a motion to move the proclamation? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Accepting this award today is David Ring, the Vice President of Quad City Bicycle Club, and Michael Schertz, Director of the Adversary and Safety of the Quad City Bike List Club.
So I'm Tina Anderson, and I'm the President of the Quad City Bike Club.
Congratulations.
I cleared my schedule. So, we appreciate just for submitting the proclamation, and we, as a club and community, do express condolences at the loss of Gage earlier this year. The Quad City Bike Club has been here in the Quad Cities in November 60 years. We're committed to advocating for biking for all on safe roads. We look forward to... We've had a great partnership with the City of Davenport over the years and look forward to continued support. As we know, people like choices in transportation when they're looking for a community to bring their families, they grow, and we really have a good thing going and want to continue to see it move forward. So on behalf of the club, on behalf of myself as a resident of Ward 4, thank you.
Thank you. Next area is petitions and communications. I just want to say, it looks like a nice weekend, so the Freight House Farmer's Market's opening, so please go enjoy that wonderful place. Anyone else? I see Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things tonight. Folks living within 200 feet of the Frank L. Smart School would have gotten theirs notice by now, but I just wanted to let everybody know that in conjunction with planning and zoning hearing, because they were asking for vacation of part of a street there on their new campus, there will be a neighborhood meeting on Monday, May 7... I'm sorry, on May 7. I believe that's Tuesday, May 7, at 6:00 p.m. at Smart Middle School Library at 1934 West Fifth Street. This is not just for the neighbors, but neighbors certainly received this, but it is obviously a public meeting as well. And then, the commission, the public hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission will be May 14, and the time is 5:00, and that will be at Council Chamber, City Hall. I will also, we will also be holding a sort of a city meeting on May 23, which is a Thursday, May 23, at 6:30 p.m. at the school, and that's, again, a chance to take a look at the plans and to hear more about this project. So I just want to let everybody know about that. But that meeting is, the Planning and Zoning meeting comes up at the library on 5/7/24 at 6:00 p.m. I also, there was some conversation last week about striping of city roads, which is always an interest and certainly something that we get calls about, and I wanted to share a little, and right after the meeting last week, we got notification that we're beginning the striping project. So I don't know if everyone's aware of this, but here are a few facts. All of city streets are painted twice a year, typically in May and October, and so, as you saw them out this week, they were, you know, beginning that process. The DOT routes, which are Kimberly, Brady, Welcome Way, and Harrison, and River Drive, are painted in the spring only, and their cost is reimbursed by the state of Iowa, and then the rest are done by the city, and this happens two times a year. There are, just, here's a fun fact, there are about 1,286 lane miles of streets in our city, our 65-square-mile city, the city that couldn't stop growing, but there's about 1,200 miles of streets in the city. There are, that adds up to 1.2 million feet of lines to paint each time the city does the work, and the DOT's share of this is another 310,000 feet of lines. So that's all about the painting of our streets, and so you should see that, and they will be coming back again and doing that in October, just for your information. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Alderman Kelly?
Thank you very much. First of all, I want to apologize for my tardiness. I was at a meeting with the school system of the black and brown educators, and I thought I could be here on time, but I do apologize. And I want to thank everybody that came out to my ward meeting last Thursday. We had an amazing time, a nice turnout. I would like to remind folks that on May 28, that'll be a year of the fall of 324 Maine, and I will be hosting a program at Third Baptist at 5:00 in the evening. That's 222 West 14th Street. It'll be a program of remembrance. And on May 30, I will be hosting another night out with the aldermen at the Wind Dancer in the East Village. All of these things are on my social media, and the city will send out the information as far as the night out, because it's considered a ward meeting. Just a little more intimate. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Gripp?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to provide a weekly update on the city administrator search. So now that we have selected a search firm, they are going to be here the week of May 13. So they'll be here Monday, May 13, and May 14, and Colin Bezinger and Associates is the firm that we selected. On Monday, he will be here to have a meeting with the search firm. That will happen in the afternoon, and then he will also be meeting with all of the elected officials, so you should have received something from Ms. Jones setting up a time for that. So I will have an update for you after that initial meeting with the search firm. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Anyone else? Very good. All right, we'll move to the four areas for discussion, which are community development, public safety, public works, and finance. The first one is community development. Alderman Gripp and Alderman Reinert will discuss. Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. We do have three items on our agenda this evening. Item number one is an ordinance for case ORD 24-02, being the request of the City of Davenport to amend Chapter 17.08 entitled "Uses of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa by Updating the Billboard Definition and Principal Use Standards." Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Step to the lectern, state your name and address or ward, please.
Derek Cornet, Seventh Ward. Same comment as before: Do not allow illegal things to be advertised in our city. Sets a bad precedent, sets a bad example, and you don't have to look at me, you can just keep looking down. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment?
Gary Eklund, I live in Davenport, and the same thing. I want to reiterate that freedom of speech is supposedly a well-established principle. Freedom of speech and freedom of religion, freedom to put a sign in your yard, to have a sign in your backyard, is considered a well-established principle in the United States, everywhere except for here. I would appeal, again, to people who write these up to include a little bit more detail for those of us who are not online for one reason or another, and also because, I assure you, not every alderperson goes to every other committee meeting to read every detail. I know all the alderpeople have lives and commitments, and there is a lot of paperwork for everyone to read, and so putting a little bit more detail on here, you're adjusting the billboard standards somehow, but as somebody who's not online, I have no idea what you're talking about. But freedom of speech should apply to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll go to council comments. We'll start with Alderwoman McGinnis.
Thank you very much. Ms. Merritt, are we allowed to dictate what's on billboards? Or perhaps, if you could answer for us?
Typically, content is not regulated. However, if your question is, are you allowed to ban things like cigarette advertisements or things of that nature, that's something that you could consider.
Would we be likely sued for something like that if we let other, like alcohol or something like that be advertised, but not cigarettes or CBD oil or whatever?
It's a concern that we would need to address if you wanted to go in that direction.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the council? Seeing no one, I'll just make a brief comment, and, you know, when we do change an ordinance, that's why we have three readings, and it takes six weeks, so it gives the council enough time to take into consideration all of the information that they need to. I will say, last year, we had some electronic billboards that were installed on 53rd. Alderman Jobchin, they're in his ward.
He and I started to get calls from residents concerned about the brightness and their proximity to neighborhoods, and if more would be going in, and so at that time, we just made the decision to put in a six-month moratorium and do some research on our billboard ordinance and make sure that we were happy with what we had in place, because this was kind of the first time that we had seen this number of electronic billboards go in. And so our staff has been researching the topic for several months. They brought it back. It's gone through planning and zoning, and here we are as a council to kind of take a look at it and decide if we're happy with that or not. So one of the things I like about it is it was done thoroughly, methodically. We benchmarked pretty much every other city in Iowa, looked at what they had for their billboard ordinances, and then, you know, to the jokes we were making yesterday about the light society, right, we also looked at what are the standards that we should be basing these things off of. So certainly encourage the council to review all of the information that's provided in the green sheets, but I do want to say that's why we're here today, and I do think the staff did an excellent job of making a recommendation to us. So seeing no other comments, we'll move on to item number... So seeing no other comments, we'll move on to item number two. Item number two is a resolution approving case F-23-12, being the request of Orville J. Burkestrand for a final plat of Daniels Churchill's second addition, a two-lot subdivision on .4 acres located at 1203 Jersey Ridge Road. Is there anyone from the public who's here to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing no one, this item moves on. Our final item is a resolution of support for the submission of an application to the state of Iowa High Quality Jobs Program through a partial property tax exemption for the construction of a high-tech data center project. Before we go to public with comment, I would ask Suzanne Knudsen from our community development office to come up and tell us a little bit about this project.
Hi, Suzanne Knudsen. I'm the Economic Development Manager in Community and Economic Development. To give you just kind of an overview of this project, it's a high-tech data center campus that's considering a location of 328 acres here in Davenport. They are in their due diligence phase, so it is by no means a done deal. It's quite a significant project. It's $800 million of capital investment. It would be at a minimum 50 new jobs. The anticipated assessed valuation is $420 million. So what we, what this resolution would do is authorize the council to support submission of their application to the state of Iowa High Quality Jobs Program, and then it outlines the city's support. And what that support we are proposing is, is a 60% tax abatement over a 20-year period. So all total, that would be about $160 million to the company. Starting year one with that assessed valuation, the city of Davenport would, would recoup itself $2.5 million in regular taxation, and then the 40% of the regular property tax levy would be distributed to all the remaining taxing jurisdictions, like, as a normal process.
Thank you. We'll go to public with comment, and then if the council has any comments of staff will, or questions of staff, then we'll call you back up. I do also want to mention to the council that the petitioner does have a representative here, if we have any questions for the petitioner. So let's go to public with comment. State your name and address of ward, please.
Gary Eckland, and I'll try to be brief, but I want to speak in opposition to this. Talked about this before, people at minimum wage, they live in the market economy, the free enterprise system. Everyone knows the major employer here is a branch of government. The other major employers are branches of government. Very few people seem to really live in the free market, but you hear about it all the time. I just heard her say, essentially, as I understood it, and I know that people are going to argue otherwise, and I would not be surprised if this doesn't go through with a 10-to-zero vote, as did the tax for Amazon, I understand, but this is a $160 million giveaway from the city to people who are already rich. I imagine it's a large corporation of some kind, and let's say they already have a billion dollars or $100 million. All they want from Davenport is $160 million of our money, and undoubtedly, 328 acres is either farmland, our wildlife habitat, and as we've talked about, the monarchs are on the way to extinction thanks to our destruction of their habitat and our poisoning of their food. So the destruction of another 328 acres of prime farmland, our prime wildlife habitat in the city of Davenport with $160 million of tax money seems like a very bad idea, and that's not counting however much money the state is. Now, there are small business people in Mr. Kelly's ward, probably in every single ward of the, of the city, where people have started a small business, and they may go bankrupt this year, or maybe they'll be successful. You hope every small business is successful, but if there is a small business and they're not getting property tax incentives, and they're not getting city cash, and they're not getting state cash, then those small business people live in the real world, in the free market economy, and they live or die. Those people already pay extra city taxes to support Jeff Bezos buying the world's largest yacht, and I don't see why any small business person on Harrison Street between here and Locust, who's paying all of their money hoping that they succeed in their business and don't go homeless, but they actually make some money, why they should have to pay extra taxes to support Amazon or this company. It's outrageous. I really, honestly, and sincerely believe that if all of the people in the Community and Economic Development Department who figure out how to give away money and tax increment finance this and give away that, if all of those people had never had this city jobs beginning in 1970, the city of Davenport's economy would be in a better place than it is right now. This is more sprawl development and more tax money. I could turn around and look at any person in the office and say, why should they have to open their billfold and give away money from their billfold to people who already have more money than they ever will? How you can, how you can tell people who work at minimum wage in the city of Davenport, Iowa, that they have to live in poverty and work more hours than city workers do because we live in a free market economy, and then the cities 10, 15, 20, $25,000 a month people come in and say, we just want to give them $160 million of city money and some more money from the state. This is, this is just ridiculous.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public here to comment on this item? All right. Seeing no one, we will go to council with questions. I'll start with Alderman Kelly.
Thank you so much. If I could just, the young lady, where is this located? Because I want to see who's affected as far as the tax dollars that you're talking about being distributed back out into the community, so I just wanted to know that.
It is at the northwest corner of... Dylan Dale. Their Iowa American recently built their new facility, Northern Davenport. It's, it's near our Eastern Iowa Industrial Center. It's adjacent to the Eastern Iowa Industrial Center.
Thank you, Brian, or whoever did that. No, I'm familiar with Davenport, but I, I don't go out there, so I'll be tuteling that way just so I can make myself familiar with what's going on. So who's going to be affected? Because there's a lot of things that have come to Davenport that Davenport isn't getting tax dollars back for, and I'm just going to say it. You know, we're bringing things in, but we're not getting the effects of the trickle-down with the money. So you're saying that... I was trying to take notes when you were saying the tax dollars that will be coming back into the city. So is that directly into the city of Davenport?
Yes. Based upon the estimated assessed valuation, the city would be taking in about $2.5 million annually from the project once it starts.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments from council? Okay. I would just say, I, you know, support this, support the submission for this application. Obviously, we're early on in, in this conversation with the developer, but when you look at the scope of, of the development with a $420 million assessed valuation, when you put that into perspective, that is more than Kraft, Sterilite, Amazon, and all of the big, big development deals we've done in recent years, which were all kind of historic for us, it's, it's bigger than all of them combined. So the tax revenue that it would bring in on an annual basis would really be significant. So total wrapped up going to the city, county, school district, $5.4 million roughly in year one, and then in year 21, $13.4 million. Davenport's share of that in year one would be $2.5 million, and in year 21 would be $6.3 million. So on a $240 million budget, it is a significant increase on an annual basis. So seeing no other comments, we are going to ask Alderman Reiners to please set our agenda.
Thank you, Alderman. I make a motion to place items one, two, and three on the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
There's a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any...
Aye.
Sorry, sorry, Alderwoman Newton. Are there any opposed? All right, our agenda has been set. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Grip and Alderman Reiners. Next area is public safety. Alderman Jovian and Alderman Tim Dunn will discuss. Alderman Jovian, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item under the public safety agenda is a resolution approving street, lane, and public ground closures on the list of dates and times to hold outdoor events. I'll read each of these before asking for comment. First, CPK, Final Spike Steam Tour Riverfront, 8:00 AM Thursday, May 9th, 2024 through 11:30 PM Friday, May 10th, 2024, closure Dylan Fountain, East Parking Lot. Next, Mississippi River Distilling Company Downtown Lounge, Final Friday Garage Ban and Alternating Currents, 318 East Second Street, various dates and times with schedule attached online. Closure, East-West Alley between East Second Street and East Third Street from Iowa Street to the Mid-American Parking Lot. And last, St. Paul Lutheran Church, a St. Paul Farewell Celebration, 2136 North Brady Street, 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM, Sunday, June 2nd, 2024. Closure, West Lombard Street from Main Street to Brady Street. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item move on. Item number two, motion approving noise variance requests on the list of dates and times for outdoor events. We have Mississippi River Distilling Company Downtown Lounge, Final Friday Garage Ban and Alternating Currents, 318 East Second Street, various dates and times, outdoor music band over 50 dB.A. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that item move on. And then item number three is a motion approving beer and liquor license applications. However, before I read each of these, I will entertain a motion to delete the item under Ward Two, Rien Mart LLC, 3815 West Kimberly Road, license type Class E Liquor. So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. With that deletion, I will then read those items under Section A, New License, New Owner, Temporary Permit, Temporary Outdoor Area, Location Transfer, et cetera. We have Rudy's Tacos, 3502 West Kimberly Road, New Owner/Licit, License Type Class C Liquor On Premises. And then Great River Brewery, 332 East Second Street, New License with Outdoor Area, License Type Class C Liquor On Premises. And then we have those items under Section B, the Annual License Renewals, which are listed for review, but I do not read those. Is there anyone from public wishing to comment on these items? Anyone from council? Seeing none, that'll move on, and I would ask Alderman Tim Dunn, please set our agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to put all items on public, public safety to the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? That closes public safety. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Jovian and Alderman Dunn. The next area is public works. Alderman Rick Dunn and Alderman Kelly will discuss. Alderman Dunn, Rick Dunn, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number one is the third consideration of an ordinance amending Section 13.16.06 General, entitled Local Limits for Specific Pollutants of the Municipal Code of Davenport, Iowa to revise local discharge limits for specific pollutants. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Yes. Gary Eckland, I got plenty ordered a little bit ago when I mentioned specific pollutants that were illegally put into the waste stream and the water stream, and I don't know if there are criminal penalties or civil penalties for violating this, but I want to say that if there are laws that apply to pollutants being put into the groundwater, they should be held... Public employees in the Public Works Department or any other department, the Police Department, if they violate the laws pouring specific pollutants into the water stream, they should be held criminally liable like anybody else. If there are laws, they should not just apply to poor people, they should apply to government people, and there are people who should be arrested for illegal dumping who are on the city's payroll.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Derek Cornet, 7th Ward. Just for clarification, are these to bring the, correct the standards that the state put out? Our standards were wrong, were printed wrong?
I don't believe they're printed wrong. I think they've been changed, but I will have staff address that.
Okay. Because in the new, new ones that we discussed a couple of weeks ago, there was a serious increase in heavy metals and arsenic. Yeah, arsenic. And, you know, that has to be treated before it's, any, any arsenic goes into the sanitary sewer or the sewer system. So I just want to make sure that that gets done before it goes into water. Thank you.
Anyone else? Before I move on to council, we have somebody from staff that can address that. I know we did that a couple of weeks ago, but...
Brian Shad, Public Works. Typically, these local limits are updated every five years along with our NPDS permit. This past, the last update, we were given an incorrect spreadsheet from the Iowa DNR. It did have errors in the calculation. They provided us with the new updated spreadsheet. That's how we got these numbers, and they were agreed upon with the DNR.
Thank you. Anyone in council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number two is a resolution wording a contract for the West Central Park Avenue Division and Marquette Street Intersection Improvements Project to McCarthy Improvement in the amount of $929,459.70. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Gary Eckland, I'm in Davenport. I apologize for speaking to this, but I feel like I must. People heard me recently say that I objected to the makeup of the selection committee for the next city administrator.
Mr. Eckland?
I'm addressing this. I will, I will. This is an award going to a particular company, and I don't want to mention their names. I'm assuming that they are all honest and decent and sincere people, but I don't believe that a company that is getting $929,000 of money from the city that also receives millions of dollars from St. Ambrose, even though a family member is a board member and is listed under IRS 990s as a conflict of interest, I do not believe that a company that is receiving almost a million dollars right here should have a board member person sitting on the selection committee for the next city administrator, because that's a conflict of interest. Assuming that the person is honest and sincere and decent does not change the obvious conflict of interest in receiving $6 million from St. Ambrose for construction or demolition of housing or whatever else they're getting, or for getting a million dollars just in this one single project. And again, I'm not alleging any impropriety by the company or by the person, but there is rules regarding conflicts of interests that don't say that a person is corrupt, but say that there's a conflict of interest, and therefore they should not be in that position. So I'm suggesting that either this should be denied, or the person that I'm referring to should remove themselves voluntarily, or be involuntarily removed from the next city administrator's selection. It's too big a conflict of interest to receive $929,000 in one contract, and who knows what contract they'll get next week, another million dollars, 2 million, 5, 10 million dollars? That's a conflict of interest, and they shouldn't simultaneously be getting city money and then be in an alliance with the people who vote in favor of this, obviously, and then be selecting the next city administrator. The conflict of interest is obvious and should be addressed by the person either voluntarily removing themselves or by the mayor resigning and a new mayor appointing the next one.
Mr. Eckland? Before we go any further, can we have staff run us through how our bidding process actually works? And this did go through a bidding process, and folks that do have conflicts of interest do have to disclose that, just to clear that up?
That is correct, Alderman Dunn.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone from council? Alderwoman McGinnis?
I would refer to the mayor, refer to the mayor, but the, Mr. This gentleman seemed to be saying there was someone connected with Bush on the selection committee for the, the city administrator. That is complete falsehood, incorrect. There is nobody from that company who is involved at all, so I don't understand where the information's coming from, but it's absolutely incorrect. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number three is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the Emerald Drive Reconstruction Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number four is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the East Locust Street, Grand Avenue to Eastern Avenue Resurfacing Project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number five is a resolution approving the plan specification form of contract and estimated cost for the water pollution control plant and compost facility, flood mitigation, stormwater, and a fluid pumping system project. Is there anyone from the public wishing... Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number six is a resolution authorizing the submission of an application to the United States Department of Transportation, Safe Streets and Roads for all grant program for the assistance to improve transportation safety throughout the city. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item?
Eric Cornet, Seventh Ward. I feel that the Seventh Ward is not represented in that application.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Alderman Grip. Thank you, Alderman Dunn. Mr. Mayor, I hate to put you on the spot, but I think it would be good to have you come up for this, and we've got some folks from the cycling community here, so I think it's always good to kind of share some information on what we're going after to try to improve safety. And my first question before you kind of get into what this application is, is have we applied for this money before?
So, Clay Merritt, Engineering Capital Projects. So, we have applied for this specific grant before. I believe we've applied twice already. However, this application is different. The other one was more tied to the Goose Creek Trail Corridor. However, we've been able to get grants through another avenue for those particular projects. So, in this case, we have kind of reconfigured what we're looking for, and this particular grant program is centered on trying to make safe crossings or both for multimodal transportation and vehicular transportation on corridors specific to the state highway system. So, North Brady, or excuse me, Brady Street in general is heavily focused in on here as well as West Kimberly.
Great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Seeing none, this item will move on. Item number seven is a resolution accepting the Iowa Department of Transportation Agreement for Traffic Safety Improvements, projects for the 53rd Street and Utica Ridge Road Intersection Improvements. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And item number eight is a motion awarding a five-year contract for transit advertising sales to Hawk Transit Advertising of Shoreview, Minnesota. Is there anyone from the public wishing to address this item? Council? Seeing none, this item will move on. And Alderman Kelly, would you set the agenda for us, please?
I'd like to make a motion to move all eight items to the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. And the agenda is set, and back to you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Rick Dunn and Alderman Kelly. The next area and last area is finance. Alderwoman Newton and Alderwoman Lynch will discuss, and I understand Alderwoman Lynch will lead. Alderwoman Lynch, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have two items on the finance agenda. One is resolution to fix meeting date for hearing on the issuance of not to exceed $31 million general obligation corporate bonds, Series 2025. Does anybody from the public have comment on this?
Eric Cornet, Seventh Ward. The fiscal year for 2025 starts in June, end of June, I think. And so, this is another $31 million on top of the 27 that we just did, bonds that we just did a few months, a few weeks ago. Or are these bonds going to be sold next year around April? So, this 31 million is not going to be added on to the already 200 million that we owe on bond debt. Right now, it's not written yet. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please say...
Shershagna, Shershagna, Third Ward. In the bond sale, which is a debt, it reads in the bond sale that we have to list all of our litigations, all of the lawsuits the city is in. And the lawsuits the city is in cannot exceed, I believe if I read it correctly, the amount of debt we are incurring as a city. And so, that's where my questions lie, is with our pending, and they're ours as a city as a whole. There are people named in them, but as a whole, they belong to the city. And I believe right now, our litigations far exceed the amounts of these general obligation debts. So, I'm just not positive, based on the reading I've done regarding litigations, that you will be able to move forward on this extra $31 million for 2025. So, I don't know if anybody can speak to that for me to make sure I'm understanding that correctly, because, oh, I don't think I have enough fingers for the lawsuits the city has right now. And I think there's one that's estimated at like 55 million, one asking for 2 million to come back from the settlement and the HR issues. So, there's just a lot of money. So, if anybody could answer that for me, I'd appreciate it immensely.
Thank you. Anyone else? At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Merritt to perhaps answer that question.
Sure. Thank you, Alderwoman Lynch. Yes, I can address the first question. So, this is just to fix the meeting date so that we can do our IRS declaration, which is required. This is for the FY '25 bond sale, which will not occur until sometime next year, late winter or early spring, as determined by our financial advisor and our bond counsel. So, they work together to set the actual date of the sale once we get closer to the time of year in which the bonds will be sold. So, that will be more information forthcoming sometime next year in '25. Secondly, as just stated, this is just to make our declaration of what we intend to sell. Once we actually get closer to the sale date, we will prepare a preliminary official statement, which will become, which will come before the council. And in that preliminary official statement, that's where we will list out any litigation, anything like that, that's reviewed by both our bond counsel and our financial advisor. And so, that will again be forthcoming sometime next year. This is just the first step. It's the declaration. Our bond counsel has reviewed this. Dorsey and Whitney serves in that role, and they do not have any concerns.
Thank you. As for the litigation question and that price not being able to supersede the bond amount, is that true? Does Mr. Gentleman, or I apologize, I don't know your name, but...
Richard Davidson, Land and Waterman. No, that is not correct. The amount of the bonds are not limited by any matter involving pending litigation.
Thank you. At this time, if no one else from the public has comment, anyone from council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number two, motion awarding a contract for repairs to fire truck T-3 to legacy fire apparatus of Shorewood, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $75,000. Anyone from the public have any comments on this item? Anyone from council? Seeing none, this item will move on. Alderman Tim Dunn, can you please set the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to put items one and two on the finance consent agenda. Thank you.
There's a motion in the second? Any opposed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Lynch and Alderwoman Newton. Next area, other ordinances, resolutions, and motions. There are none for this evening. Are there any other reports, Ms. Merritt? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There's a motion, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Have a good weekend.